What they gave the other night? This college football game, the very same thing. They made that happen, yeah, both teams. Oh, God. It was amazing. I've seen a huge football fan retort.
Okay, we're good? All right. Call to order the Vermillion County Council meeting for December 8th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Costello.
Here.
Mr. Somerville.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mrs. James, I'm present. Mrs. Furry.
Here.
Mr. Bose.
Here.
And Mr. Weir.
Here.
Thank you. First item we have is approval of our minutes for our November 10th, 2025, meeting and also our November 20th meeting for the special council meeting that we had on that day. Are there any additions, comments, corrections for either of those minutes? Anything for either of them?
Make a motion to approve both.
November 10th and November 20th. One second. I have a motion for Mr. Weir, a second for Mrs. Furry, to accept the Vermillion County Council meeting minutes from November 10th and November 20th, 2025. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating yes.
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 All those opposed, state no. All right, minutes are approved.
That was a yes.
Thanks, sorry.
I wasn't sure what's.
I threw you off on that one.
You did.
I didn't say anything.
I was trying to write and talk at the same time.
Yes, I.
Thanks for following along. Just testing me, making sure you're listening.
The ice cream happened so fast.
All right, next we have additional appropriations. We have a few this evening. First. Okay. The first additional appropriation this evening is from the flatbook fund from the auditor's office. It is for $32,000 in part-time and $8,000 in overtime. This is for the 2026 year. Part of this was already discussed during budget hearings. We had not advertised the flatbook fees. We'd already talked about putting some overtime and part-time in there. However, the amounts are a little different than what we had discussed before, but we cannot actually approve this this evening for '26. Doing so, we put it into the '25 budget. So we can table it, though, into '26 so that way we don't have to re-advertise it. So.
I make a motion to table
Okay.
the flatbook auditor's office $40,000 additional appropriation.
No second.
Okay. I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Bose, to table the additional appropriation, the total amount of $40,000 from the flatbook fund. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state no. All right. Additional is tabled.
Mr. You'll bring out the January.
The next additional appropriation is from the Commissioners Court. It's kind of a reoccurring additional appropriation. They're asking for $2,931 into the historical markers. We originally appropriated this back in September of 2024. They used some of the amount from the original amount, but had not used all of it. They're asking to put it back into the budget so they can spend the remainder of the amount.
Are they wanting this again for this year or next? Do we know?
I know one time they had some invoices that needed paid.
Okay.
I think part of it might be for the next year also.
Okay.
I suppose.
So it'll go for '25, and then if they use it for '25 or can't encumber it, then we'll have to just appropriate again in '26 for whatever they have remaining again.
Because I know there's a list on part of that one we have done before. That work has not been completed yet.
I know there was some delays in getting the historical markers. I know they just put the one up a few weeks ago, maybe a month or so. But there again, if they don't use it by the end of '25, we can reappropriate it again for '26.
Or the other option is to table.
Unless they have something that's due.
No, I think they're going to supplement it.
Motion to approve.
Okay. A second. I have a motion for Mr. Somerville, a second for Mrs. Furry, for the additional appropriation in the amount of $2,931 into historical markers. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state no. Appropriation approved. The next additional appropriation tonight is from the Sheriff's Department for overtime and the amount of $40,000. They've accumulated over the last couple of months and for the end of the year, where they need additional amount into the overtime account. Mike came to us last month and told us this was going to happen, so.
I'll make a motion to approve $40,000 into the Sheriff's Department Fund or the General Fund.
Okay.
Second, okay.
How many hours is this, Mike? Sorry, I said, I see the dollar amounts, but how many hours is this, do you know?
I don't have the exact hours. No, that's jail and, or jail and, uh, deputies.
Okay.
We're, I think I said it last month. I live today too, before I come over. We're 2,192 holes ahead of what we were a year ago today. That's why we are.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any further discussion? I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Somerville, to approve $40,000 from the General Fund into the Sheriff's Department overtime line item. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state no. Additional is approved.
This is, I think this is the back person.
Yes. Okay. The next additional appropriation, I think, is there anyone here from the Fair Board this evening? No? Might be a communication thing. We have a request from them for an additional appropriation for 2026. It's within $2,000 of the amount we actually put into the budget for 2026, which we cannot, we wouldn't need to do an additional appropriation for that since it's already listed in the budget. Just as a 2026 appropriation request under letter. So that money's already accounted for. In January, it can be released from the auditor's office, but not until then, so. No one's here?
Can somebody from the auditor's office contact them and let them know what the budget, budget amount was for 2026? I think that's, that's where they're just confused.
They have two line, and if they're listening, they have two line items in the Commissioners Court budget for the Fair Association and the amusement rides carnival. And then there is a line item in the certified shares for the concert, so. It equals the 110.
It's 110, not 112.
Yeah, which their letter's at 112, so. Being that we're close in numbers, I think there just may be some communication. We'll make sure we get hold of them by now.
What's that?
We need to table it?
Just in case it's something else.
Okay, it's something different? Okay, we can do that.
What's this attached to?
That was from the request earlier in the year. When they came back for the additional appropriation earlier this year, like, I think that was made.
Yeah, I mean, I understood that, but I didn't understand why it was attached to this.
I'm not exactly sure. They were together? Okay.
I'll make a motion to table the $112,000 for the Fair Board.
A second there.
I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Weir, to table the additional appropriation from the fair.
Is that a motion to table to clarify?
Yes. Yes. Let's see, clarify. Need further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state no. All right. The additional is tabled, so we can get some clarification on that. I believe that is the end of our additional appropriation. One more? Is it in the, in the back页? I saw it on the sheet. That's it. Which one is it? The parks for $550, it's the donation. Let's see if I know this. Okay.
It's on the back, have another page.
Well, it's on this sheet. It was advertised. So can I borrow your sheet again, so I can read from it? Thank you. The additional appropriation is in the amount of $550. It's in the Parks Department in their park donation account. They are asking to appropriate that into their line item for spray services at Trailhead Park. They're a project working with the VTA to.
I'll make a motion to approve the $550 into the park donation fund.
No second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Bose, to approve the $550 additional appropriation to the park donation fund. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state no. Additional is approved. Now I think we're through. Thank you. All right, next up is transfers. We have several tonight. The first transfer that I have is from the allocation fund, number one. They're asking to transfer $2,552.50 from capital outlays to professional services, to pay for professional services, to pay curtaily for the tax increment financing. And it does require a vote this evening.
I'll make a motion for the allocation fund, number one, $2,552.50 from capital outlays into professional services.
One second. I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Ms. Brown, to allow the transfer of funds for the allocation fund, number one, in the amount of $2,552.50 from capital outlays to professional services. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state no. Transfer is approved.
We want to pull. The extension is a vote as well. I guess this one can probably be pushed to the back. It's on.
I'll just go through them, how they're filed.
Okay.
So the next one does not require a vote, is reporting only. Is in the jail. They are transferring $500 from cleaning and laundry to trash hauling. Any questions on that one? The next transfer is from the extension office. It does require a vote this evening. They are transferring $39.98 from travel to office equipment.
I'll make a motion to approve $39.98 transferring from travel to office equipment for the extension.
Second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Weir, to allow the transfer, the extension, to transfer $39.98 from travel to office equipment. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Transfer is approved. The next transfer is, also requires a vote this evening. Is for the prosecutor. They are asking to move $1,500 in office equipment to office supplies. It says to pay for office supplies.
I'm making a motion.
All right.
A second.
That works. I have a motion from Mr. Weir, a second from Mrs. Furry, to allow the prosecutor to transfer $1,500 from office equipment to office supplies in their county general fund. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state no. Transfer is approved. The next is reporting only, does not require a vote. Auditor is transferring $611.22 from official records to office supplies. Any questions on that one? The next is also reporting only. The Parks Department is moving $400 from water and sewage to electricity. Questions? The next transfer is the Health Department. It does not require a vote, is reporting only. $2,000 from utilities to rent. Part of that's for the January rent by the bank in December, so. The next is also reporting only for the courthouse. It's in the total amount of $1,500. $600 from trash hauling, $500 from electricity, $400 from natural gas is being transferred into water and sewage for a total of $1,500. The next transfer is the Probation Department. It is also reporting only. They are transferring $500 from maintenance agreements to conference and training for an upcoming training. Next transfer is also General Fund. It is reporting only. Surveyor is transferring $98.25 from surveyor supplies to office supplies. Time of year again. And the last transfer that I have is also reporting only from the auditor. They are transferring $92.53 from dues and subscription to training and conferences. Any questions? So the next item is the transfer, or treasures monthly report. I'm struggling on that. Are there any questions on the report? Questions or comments? Yes. I breezed that one, sorry.
Okay.
All right. We will move right along then. We do not have any old business tonight, but we do have some new business. First up is our board appointments for 2026. This evening, we have four different boards to appoint numbers to. We have the Alcohol Beverage Board, E911, the Park Board, and Redevelopment Commission. Yes?
I have a question on the Park Board.
Okay, if you want to come on up.
I'm Wayne Boychon, President of the Park Board, Mrs. Beck.
Hi. So in 2021, I did a master plan for the Vermillion County Park Board. It was approved by Indiana Department of Natural Resources and it's included. The county comprehensive plan also had to be submitted to DNR for the, our master plan to get approved. That opened us up to some grants, which is why we have some money now in the donations fund because we have been able to apply for more grants as a result of that. But in doing so, part of that plan, and we'll take one, pass it down there. I talked with the auditor's office at the time and I, I don't know if it was you, Brenda, or what are your, I thought it was, I think it was you.
You'll have to refresh my memory, it slipped since then.
So at that time, and I will agree, I was on a deadline to get this done. The entire master plan and all the addendums is about 45, 50 pages. At the time you, I was shared, it was shared with me that terms, the two terms that are up on the Park Board started in 2018, and they are four-year terms, which means 2018 to 2022, reappointed in 2023, they would expire in 2026. That is consistent with Indiana code. And if you want the code for the establishment of park boards, that's Indiana Code 36-10-3. It's consistent with Indiana code and also with, and this is also provided to me by the auditor's office in 2021, the establishment of, or actually re-establishment of the Vermillion County Park Board in 1983 and signed by the auditor at the time. Juanita Ray, Ed, Ed, Juanita Ray. Anyway, I just, I have some questions. Number one, the terms for the, the two positions for the county council, those should be on staggered terms, not appointed in the same year. Again, consistent with Indiana code and with this Vermillion County code. So there's, they should be two years apart. Somehow the two appointed by the judge got one year apart, but at least they are staggered. Those should be also on two-year staggered terms. So there's just, there's some discrepancy on official records and the years of the terms. So I just would like the county council to reconsider this, at least appointing tonight, to make sure we're in compliance with our county ordinance as well as Indiana code. Does that make sense?
Yes.
The judge ones, I do see there's two of them.
What, they are staggered one year, it should be staggered two years.
My spreadsheet says two years. Mine does say two years.
I'm just going by the date, I'm just going by the years that were given to me by the auditor's office in 2021.
But it does have both of them for the council.
On the same year, and they should be staggered. So.
And what you're, I'm excuse me, what yours is, you're saying they're up, is it this year now? The one we got from, what we passed out, so it's next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the.
And that's why we advertise it because of.
I know. Yeah, I, I, I believe you, I just, I'm just sharing what was provided to me for the master plan from the auditor's office in 2021.
I do not recall getting you any.
That was a long time ago, I agree.
This is, I just inherited what I inherited from the previous auditor myself.
At some point, records got mixed up, and it could've been at typos. I get that.
Yeah.
I get that, but I think for certification for everybody, we need to make sure that we're all on the same page. So. I, I mean, we were confused at the Park Board meeting. It's like, hey, we got a call from the auditor's office and it was like, that shouldn't be this year. And it shouldn't be the same year from the same entity either. And Brenda, you agree with that as well, from, from your perspective, and you just know, yeah.
Usually they're staggered.
Yeah, they are, they should be. So we just want some clarification and investigate. We just want to make sure we're all compliant.
Right. We'll have to pull some meeting minutes.
Yeah.
And find those.
Can we just table that appointment until January?
We'll just hold it till January?
Yeah.
Until we figure out what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and I need to redo the master plan, too. I've got to resubmit to DNR, it's a five-year plan, so it's due in 2026 as well, so I'll be.
Not the next few weeks, right?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no. Christmas only for family the next few weeks.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll pull some meeting minutes and things and go back and see what we can find.
All right, yeah, just wanted to bring it to your attention before anything was done again to stay in compliance with the county ordinance and the state Indiana code.
We've been using the Excel spreadsheet, and so.
Yeah.
I, I, I get it, I get it, I get it, but I also understand typos happen as well, so.
And sometimes when I know, like, Cory filled in for his dad when he passed away, I'm wondering if maybe something didn't get, like, switched. Sometimes we have that trouble too.
No, because they were both appointed.
You go down the term and then it's due to be reappointed.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll go back and see what we can find.
So, yeah, what we need to look, to do is look up when Dick was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
There's one down.
Yep. The Alcohol and Beverage Board? We'll start with that one then. Since that one, I think we're good. We had one applicant, she is also the current person we do have on that board. So for each board, if somebody would make a motion and a second to appoint a person, we'll just go down the list with the ones we have left.
I'll make a motion for Cynthia Myers for the Alcohol Beverage Board, one-year term.
I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Somerville, to appoint Cynthia Myers, the Alcohol and Beverage Board, for a year of one, for a term of one year. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. All opposed, state no. Cindy is appointed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the one applicant we have, Robert Spence, for the E911 Board for a two-year term.
Two year or one year?
Or one year, I can't read.
One year.
Yeah.
No second.
I have a motion for Mr. Weir, a second for Mr. Bose, to retain Mr. Robert Spence on the E911 Board for another term of one year. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no.
Like to table the next one, Park Board?
Uh, yes, we'll table the. Got a motion to table?
Yep.
Where do we anticipate getting that information from? If the information we have is incorrect, or what?
Meeting minutes.
Uh, we'll have to go back through the meeting minutes as far back as we can find to see, like, when appointments were made and then.
Just try to deduce what happened.
Yeah, we'll take that, see where we can, where we went wrong, what happened.
I'll second the table motion from there.
Is it possible that it's currently as it is? I mean, I guess wherever we find out is what we find out.
I don't know. I mean, it would make sense if they were staggered, but.
I mean, from the information Park Board provided.
But that means probably one of them is up, but we just don't know which one. Yep. I have a motion for Mr. Weir, a second for Mrs. Furry, to table the Park Board appointment until we can investigate further on term dates.
I'll second that.
I already have a second, sorry. I have a motion from, from Mr. Weir, a second from Mrs. Furry. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no. All right. Table, motion to table is approved.
Now, Redevelopment Commission, we have one-year terms currently with John Moore.
Now redevelopment commission, we have one-year terms currently with John Moore and currently with Kelly Somerville. We have Orrin Doc Sutherland is currently the non-voting member appointed by school boards. I'll make a motion to continue with John Moore and Kelly Somerville and, um, allow Orrin as the, as they choose to fit at the, the school boards there.
I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Mrs. Furry, a second from Mr. Weir, to retain John Moore and Kelly Somerville as their, for an additional one-year term. With the recommendation of keeping Orrin Doc Sutherland as the non-voting member appointed by the school boards. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. All right. You said it better than I did. Congratulations. That is the end of our appointments for tonight. Put the parks board back on for January. Uh, our next item of new business is the council's twenty twenty-six meeting dates and times. I think we have typos on that one too. Um, the time should be six thirty. Six thirty? Yeah, I think it was probably from the commissioners, from there's the six, so. The meetings will be at six thirty, except for the budget hearings, which are Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of September fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. Those start at nine a.m. in the morning for budget hearings, but all of the regular meetings will be at six thirty.
How about, uh, September sixteenth, is that, we're gonna leave that at six or six thirty? We moved it up. We, we changed it this year, I know.
Yeah, we probably could leave that one at six.
I would say, I, I would suggest we leave it at six.
Yeah, six. And if need be by then, with notice, we can change it.
Right.
Make it at three.
Yeah. Um, as far as the dates go, does anyone have any? payment needs changed on those? I assume October nineteenth is, is the third week? Mm-hmm. I honestly didn't look at it. It's to avoid. To avoid Columbus Day and fall breaks and cover bridge and all that fun stuff. People couldn't be here. Plus it gives us an extra week to get budget stuff. Yes, it does, we need that.
We need to motion this?
Yep, if everyone's good with the dates.
Looks good.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six council meeting schedule with the exception of all regular monthly meetings have a start date, or start time of six thirty P.M. With the exception of those at the budget hearing, uh, timeframe.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion from Mr. Costello, a second from Mrs. Furry, to adopt the Vermillion County Council twenty twenty-six meeting schedule. As Neil mentioned, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, take no. Schedule's approved. Item C on new business, um, was the prosecutor with budget issues and questions, he was not able to make it tonight. He sent us email this morning, so I think they're going to reschedule. So we'll move along to item D. Um, D and E are kind of the same. It's the salaries and salary resolution for twenty twenty-six. Oh. Sorry, it's not the same. I thought we had that one extra item in there. I think it's definitely. Is that what you're looking at? Twelve, yeah, that's maybe five twelve. I'm not sure if it's stacking. Mm-hmm. Okay, it is. So. I did not print a copy of it.
What about the?
He didn't, no. Print a copy of everything else.
The E and A?
She didn't print copies. I sent it to everybody.
I got it.
You have it? If I move that down, can you go get, print a copy of that, that I emailed that one? Did I not? It's emailed to you. I emailed the first time and then there were a couple errors, so there, look at the second email, so. Okay, we'll come back to that one, she's gonna print us copies of it. We will move on to item F. The E nine one one, there's a ten thousand dollar transfer from Apex to EMA.
That should be ten dollars. It was a mirror on my board, but it should be ten thousand dollars from Apex to EMA.
Okay. So it's.
It doesn't have any.
Oh, it does, okay. So it's E.
We received a grant from Apex Silver, the deposit to the general fund, and I'm assuming the, the grant money is.
For EMA? Okay, so Apex gave a grant to EMA of ten thousand dollars. It was deposited into the general fund, we just need to appropriate it into a line item so they can spend it.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Do we need a line item specifically, we have that?
Um. Maintenance. Maintenance, repairs and maintenance or equipment and maintenance agreements? Equipment and means, okay, so that will be line account number three, three, five, zero, zero. In fund, um, the general fund in location one, three, three, emergency management. I have a motion for Mr. Bose, a second for Mr. Weir, to appropriate the grant of ten thousand dollars into, uh, general fund account for emergency management in location one, three, three. Line item three, three, five, zero, zero, equipment and maintenance agreements. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, take no. Appropriation is approved. Thanks, Jimmy. Um, I, moving along, we'll go to item G, um, the employee longevity resolution, uh, twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Last year, when we approved the sal- salary resolution, the longevity was previously being paid on the last, uh, payroll. Last year, we moved it to the first payroll of December and, um, it kind of got over, over, we got it about missed. So we, we're just making sure we acknowledge that, we are correcting it. And so this resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve is concerning longevity payments to the county employees, whereas the county council. Thank you. Previously adopted resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, establishing, establishing, establishing compensation for employees during twenty twenty-five, including payment of longevity, payment to eligible employees. Whereas said longevity payment, pay was pursuant to the resolution intended to be paid with the first employee payroll in December of twenty twenty-five, but was inadvertently not made due to it being a change in timing from previous years. Be it therefore resolved as follows, the auditor is authorized to pay all eligible employees for their longevity pay via special payroll to be made as soon as it is practical, as soon as practical, so. I believe they're trying to get those out in the next couple of days, so that way we can get that corrected. But I do need a motion and a second to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
I would make that motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve concerning longevity payments.
No second.
I have a motion for Mr. Costello, a second for Mr. Bose, to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Resolution is approved. Um, also, at the end of the year, we'll just go out and finish up. H, um, the local income tax for highway improvement fund, it's resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. We take our edit tax and put fifty percent into the highway. Um, we just have to put that on paper that we're actually doing that, the state board of accounts, so this resolution is as follows. Transferring twenty twenty-six revenue from local income tax to the highway capital improvement fund. Whereas Vermillion County has determined that additional revenue is needed to support highway department expenditures in twenty twenty-six. Whereas Vermillion County also anticipates it will receive a surplus of certified shares in economic development local income tax revenues in twenty twenty-six. And desires to transfer revenues from these local income taxes to the highway capital improvement fund, fund four eight nine nine, to meet the budgetary needs of highway department in twenty twenty-six. Be it therefore resolved as follows, one, the auditor shall transfer twenty-five percent of monthly distributions of certified shares local income tax to the local highway capital improvement fund, fund forty-eight ninety-nine during twenty twenty-six. And two, the auditor shall transfer fifty percent of the monthly distributions of economic development income taxes to the highway capital improvement fund, fund forty-eight ninety-nine during twenty twenty-six. We've taken the money from the economic development income tax since we, its inception, so we'd just like to see it on paper. I'll make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five thirteen, transferring twenty twenty-six revenue from local income tax to the highway capital improvement fund.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Weir, to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, as read. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Resolution is approved. Thank you for going to print that. So this would be twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, I assume. Okay, we're gonna call this resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, since we just did it. Fixing compensation for employees and officials for the year twenty twenty-six. This lists each job title, the maximum budget, and the maximum hourly rate if applicable. With the following salary items, so. Are there any questions on that? These amounts were taken from the wild budget sheets, so. Do we need to read any of it? Do I need to read any of it? I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, uh, fixing compensation for employees and officials for the year twenty twenty-six. I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Somerville, to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Resolution is approved. And that is the end of our new business. Is there any public comment this evening?
It's not so much public comment, it's just a little bit of a public service announcement, giving all of the Ryan County Emergency Management Director. Uh, winter was here, it came a little bit earlier than what we wanted it to this year, um, especially this weekend, temperatures are gonna drop. Just wanna make sure that, to remind people and the citizens and those watching, uh, try to leave your faucets at a drip. Water bills are expensive, but it's gonna be a lot more expensive at that point. Uh, have your vehicles checked out, have your batteries tested, make sure your windshield wipers are in good working order, have some spare clothing and warm clothing in your vehicles. Um, also, uh, the weather cameras on the Indiana Weather Network are active. There's one facing sixty-three usually at the sheriff's office. And then the one at Black Diamond Fire Department has been active for a couple of days now and it faces one sixty-three, uh, towards the west. So if you wanna look at road conditions, um, online, they are live streaming, it's free to watch. Just make sure that you use caution when you're outside and it's cold, especially in the similar to the temperatures and, and stuff like that, make sure everybody bundles up and, um, we'll, we'll be here if you need us.
That's really good advice. Were, were those out again, Indiana Weather Network?
Indiana Weather Network on YouTube. If you search Indiana Weather Network, you'll see a list of the live cameras they have in Indiana so far.
I'd seen their posts on Facebook about it, so.
Yep, and hopefully here in the next couple of weeks, we'll wait on Perry'sville to get something done, then there'll be one at Perry'sville Fire Department, so we'll have one in the north and a middle and a south.
Now we go on five one one. And it will pull up N dot trucks.
Yep.
The Indiana site.
Yeah, if you, also, thank you, uh, for mentioning, there's also an app you can get through, uh, N dot, and you can see the live cameras on the snowplows too.
And it'll show you wherever you wanna go in the state, so you're traveling.
Yep.
Nice.
Click that truck there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're reminding the sheriff to leave the water running at the jails.
Just turn the heat up, buddy.
Don't want it to freeze up.
John Moore, when I left Clinton, I was the mayor, I don't know, I still will be when I get back. Last week, I went to a school over in Indianapolis sponsored by AIM, which is Accelerate Indiana Municipalities. Two things I came away with, number one, you have to be insane to run for local office. But number two, with what's coming, this is gonna be a short legislative session. And they're too busy trying to be geographers and warp the precinct, voting precincts to get much done. But we need to start planning now for what's gonna happen in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight. And what I am hoping and what they stress is that may have sometime in the next three or four months, council, commissioners, cities, and towns can get together and start working on something to minimize the negative effects that we're gonna face in twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, I'm ready to sit down and talk whenever you are, except not the next month sometime.
That's a great idea, so we'll be in touch. Thanks, John. Thank you.
It's probably important too, that like incorporated towns definitely be involved in the way that taxation will change for their, you know, like, public safety, things like that, that may or may not be the same.
Yeah, the local income tax structure is completely changing, so.
So they need to understand there's things on their part, maybe they have to do, it's probably wise to, I don't know how they notify them somehow, a letter of some sort.
Cause there'll be things they have to adopt and then they send to us for final adoption, so, um, there's things that everyone's gonna have to work together on. Cause there'll be things they have to adopt and then they send to us for final adoption, so, um, there's things that everyone's gonna have to work together on.
I would assume each town has an attorney or something, I know Fairview Park does, so they.
I bet Scott can guess some time.
I've been telling most of them this, I do, I have been telling them this, but it's hard to understand until you start digging into it, I think they, oh, it's changing on whatever, and, you know, the public safety money is going away, that sometimes does get there. What?
There's some big changes.
And there's some deadlines that they're gonna have to meet, so, um, it really don't take effect until 2027, but I do think that the earlier we start to look at it, the, the better we'll, uh, be able to make the necessary decisions about what is going to be made. Cause it's gonna be up to, mostly to you guys, uh, what, what rates are gonna be and how the taxes are gonna be divided.
So should we go ahead and look at trying to, as John said, set a date? I mean, whether it's first quarter, second quarter.
The only thing, the only thing I, I was thinking, I, the legislators, there's gonna be some lobbying done to the legislators to try and make some fixes and some changes.
I sure hope they're successful.
They're gonna have a short session this year, so maybe.
After that short session.
That's over, uh, just to see if, if they have, I know, um, from things I have read that, you know, there's gonna be a lot of people hitting for a lot of different things and, and so, um, it might be wise just to wait a little while and set up something in the, in the, uh, second quarter, probably would be about right. I can't remember those, those short sessions of the legislators, I think are over by usually, second quarter or so.
We need to.
They're supposed to end this one quicker because they started. And that was the consensus over there, for what we were told by the people, and to know that this was gonna be, since they started in December, it was gonna.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I had heard in the news.
So sometime after they get done, we'll try to set a date and see if it can get.
We kinda need to get all, a list of all the incorporated towns and when their meetings are set.
Townships.
Yeah, and all that.
Townships should be, yeah, that's the point, you have the townships, probably volunteer fire department. Almost needs to be a.
I mean, if.
Scheduling's gonna be fun.
If we could just throw a date out there, maybe.
Yeah.
And then that way, we can get the word out to everybody and so-called location, at least. We can always change the date, but at least get the communication starting.
Put you in charge of that, John.
She said she put you in charge of that. I can give you a call, we can discuss and see if we can. All right, any other public comment tonight? None, all right. Anybody up here have anything?
I want to wish everybody a merry, merry Christmas and stay safe. It's cold, stay warm.
That's easy for you, safe and close. Oh, she's good, John.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All right. Have a good night, everyone.